Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. Today is March 20 of 2025, and this is our Yaden Borough Council Legislative Meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Cave, roll call, please.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Vice President Roaklout. We'll start with our esteemed Mayor Rowan Hepkins.
Present.
Our President Latoya Moreau is absent this evening. Vice President Leana Roaklout.
Present.
Counselor Nicole Beating.
Present.
Counselor Antoinette Truheart.
Present.
Counselor Michael Trent.
Here.
Counselor Jesse Peets.
Present.
Counselor Lorraine Johnson is here virtually. We have both Sean Kilkenny and Brianna Brien from Kilkenny Law, our solicitor firm. Present, present. And Nafis Nichols, our finance director. Ilana Hughes, our tax collector, is not here this evening. And we have Joe Viscustow from Penone Engineering. You have a call, madam. Back for them.
Thank you very much. You indicated that Counselor Lorraine Johnson is present?
Yes.
Okay, we have to be able to hear her. Can the audience hear her in the back?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, Citizens Forum. I'll call Anna Belafondri- Fandra Antonio to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. The first thing I wanted to do was talk about transparency, and I want to extend a thank you to the finance director for his transparency last week. For those that may not have attended the last meeting, we know that some residents had paid taxes in 2024, but accidentally it wasn't recorded that way, that they might get a letter. So, thank you for letting us know that with regards to that. We do appreciate the transparency. The other thing that I wanted to ask is if we could continue with transparency. We're seeing that there are... Okay. We're seeing with regards to the police chief contract that it's coming up for vote like three times. Any additional information that we can be given with regards to things like that would be greatly appreciated with regards to the transparency. With regards to staffing levels, I know that you are taking a look with regards to staffing levels. I see that there is... We're looking with regards to hiring a public works director. Was hoping that we would also be able to take a look with regards to the code director. I know that we've been operating without a code director, but if we would hire one, we could potentially eliminate some other costs that we're incurring with regards to our architectural firm. We know that we have incurred, I think, hundreds of thousands of dollars last year with regards to that. But if we had a code director, it might be able to help eliminate that. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about was just lawsuit liability. If we could continue working just to make sure that we're minimizing our potential with regards to incurring lawsuits, that would be greatly appreciated. And the other, I'm not 100% certain. I heard that potentially a privileged communication between a resident and a counselor had somewhat how got its way into the general public. Not sure if that happened, but if that does, what that does with regards to our potential for legal liability, if it did happen, what can we do in the future with regards to preventing incidents like that from occurring? Because it also brings up other concerns with regards to is there other privileged confidential information that might making its way to the general public? So, thank you all for taking the time to speak with me. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to call Ron Francis to the podium, please.
To the mayor, acting president, counselors, solicitor. I think I missed the borough manager and Mr. Nafis and residents. Good evening, and chief. I think I mentioned several months ago that I want to applaud everybody up here, including the chief, for everything they've been doing. For the last couple of years, we know previously we had dysfunction and division. I want to thank one and all for everything that you've been doing to bring it moving forward, okay? This is a labor of love. Your jobs are labors of love. You're not getting paid a lot of money. And I want to reemphasize that to the community, that you all are doing your best. Yaden is moving forward. And rather than people criticize any of you all, we need to roll up our sleeves and work with you. This is our community. We fall, we fall together. We win, we win together. So I just want to say thank you all, thank you, chief, everybody. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I would like to call Clara Johnson to the podium, please.
I want to say good evening to all here tonight. And I'm going to piggyback somewhat on what Ron Francis said. I name you all because that's the mayor, counselor, and chief, and the residents. I name you all because I give thanks to all that you do for this borough. The lies and garbage floating around on social media is appalling and misleading. You guys have to love our community and want better quality and want a better quality of life. Because $50 a week is even below minimum wages for the abuse you receive from some Yadenites. I also know it is an ethic violation to discuss voting in executive room, something that does not happen. After years of dismay, year 2022 and 2023, and Yaden not moving forward, there has been progress, slow but sure. View what progress there has been on the Yaden website. No one has special privileges in Yaden. We learned that after we turned 12 years old. Let's all work together for the better good of Yaden. Residents, it is very unfortunate for all of the private progress and cohesiveness in community that some residents have determined to flaunt their white privileges, despairing hard-working neighbors, and constantly tearing us down. The people embarrass our community online, should be ashamed and stop it immediately. It is mean, spirited, distraction, and just another form of oppression. Don't fall for it. Yaden deserves that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other Citizen Forum forums? Just want everybody to have an opportunity. Okay, Madam Vice Chair, I have a question for our solicitor. Beating, I mean, Counselor Beating. Solicitor Kilkenny, could you please explain to our general audience what the meaning of libel is? Educate me, please.
Sure, you know, it's not the textbook definition. I'm kind of doing this with kind of a general understanding, I think. But libel is when you're in a public forum such as like a newspaper or a website or anything like that. If you're basically going ahead and spreading purpose untrue about a person or individual.
Okay, so the statements have to be untrue about the individual for it to be libel? Okay, so my other question to you is, are our emails privileged or private information?
If they... Well, sometimes they might be. They might be privileged if it involves me or, you know, a lawsuit or something like that. It might be privileged. But general communications between borough councilors and staff...
And constituents?
Yeah, constituents, rural write-to-no requests would be...
Okay, thank you very much for clearing that up. Thank you. I would like to move to the next category, please, the minutes. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the February 13, 2025 caucus meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions? May... Can you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Oh, that's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the motion has passed. Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the February 20, 2025 legislative meeting minutes.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded, seconded. I would like to take a vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
The motion has passed. Thank you. Next, I would like to have the mayor, the mayor's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My report stands as submitted that last week's caucus. I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, President's Report. As indicated earlier, Chair Monroe is not available this evening, so we do not have a President's Report. Next, I would like to entertain the manager's report.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the approval of the resignation of employee 10274, effective February 21, 2025.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. I would like to take a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
The motion has passed. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the approval of the completion of the probationary period for employee 10273, effective immediately.
I would like to entertain a motion, please.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. I would like a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
The motion passed.
Madam Vice President, I'd like the motion to consider the approval of employee 10251's pay rate increase to 100% as indicated in the local 32BJ collective bargaining agreement, effective March 30, 2025.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please.
So moved. Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. I would like to have a vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
The motion carries.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the approval of employee 10242's pay rate increase to 100% as indicated in the local 32BJ collective bargaining agreement, effective March 30, 2025.
I would like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. I would like to take a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the hiring of Carla Kaufman as the library director of the Yaden Public Library, starting at a salary of $64,500 per year, contingent on the successful completion of a 90-day probationary period.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. I would like a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
The motion carries.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the hiring of Catherine Howe as a public works director at a starting salary of $85,000 per year, contingent on the successful completion of a 90-day probationary period.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider to advertise ordinance number 2025-003, amending 285-32 in the Yaden Borough Code entitled Special Purpose and Special Parking... Special Permit Parking Zones.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions. I would like to have a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, madam.
Thank you. Mr. Cave, I do have a question for you. We are currently advertising for what positions?
The... Will be advertised for a code director and... Well, no, that one's going there now. Code director and a part-time code informant slash partner informant.
Okay, thank you very much. Just for clarity, under Section 7, managers' report subsections A through F, they were all personnel issues, therefore, we could not ask questions on the floor. Moving right along to the solicitor's report.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Couple of months ago, I was given direction to go ahead and work on the extension of the contract of our chief, reach out to chief's counsel. Had the opportunity to speak to him. We negotiated terms that were consistent with borough council and administration's desires. So to obviously be binding, we have to go ahead and ratify this publicly, and that's what's before you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to consider... To adopt the finalized employment agreement between Chief Henry G. Amoco and the Borough of Yaden, effective February 1, 2025, for a term not to exceed three years. I would like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. I would like to take a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, chief.
All right. Moving right along, tax collector's report.
Madam... Excuse me, Madam Vice Chair, the only thing that I would add to the report is that Mr. Cave, Ms. Sapp, and myself have been working diligently to address the issue around the certified letters that borough employees... I'm sorry, borough property owners receive from Tax Claim Bureau. Ms. Sapp, I would like to give her kudos because she is taking some initiative and actually trying to get ahead of it even further by going into the system to see what accounts weren't posted, comparing it to what was turned over to Tax Claim Bureau. We're sending the strike-off letters almost daily. We had a conversation with the Tax Claim Bureau. They promised to work with us and turn it around as quickly as possible within a 24-hour period of receiving said letters. Hopefully, I don't know at the time if she knew we were going to be sending 30 at a time, but they have been turning it around quickly. But Ms. Sapp is, again, taking that initiative to go to get ahead of it before residents even contact the borough. Residents that have contacted the borough, we have been very responsive between the three individuals working on it, and we, again, have been turning them around within a 24-hour period. So I just wanted to make note of that as it relates to tax collector's report, and everything else stands as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, and thank you, Ms. Sapp. Thank you. As well as Mr. Nichols and Mr. Cave.
That's right.
Thank you. There... Something unfortunate happened, and people stepped right up immediately and came up with a resolution, and they're doing a wonderful job in addition to other duties they're responsible for. So thank you very much. I appreciate you. Okay, moving right along, please, engineer's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and good evening, council members, and Mr. Mayor. We have two resolutions that should be considered for approval tonight. The first one is to approve the county aid resolution. This will be... This is part and partial to implementation of your road program for this year. So I think doing one at a time?
Yes. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the county aid resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions? I would like to take a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating. Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the second is to consideration to approve a DCNR grant application for the Yaden Community Park Phase 2. And Phase 2 will include, just so everybody is aware, field restoration, rubber surface for the playground, parking... An additional parking lot off of Providence, and a water feature swale or rain garden, something that we would have to do because of the impervious surface of the parking lot. So, and there's a few other minor items also.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the DCNR grant application for Yaden Community Park Phase 2.
So moved. Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions? I would like to have a roll call, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
That's it in my report. Unless there are any questions.
I do have a question, please. I believe we were waiting for dates with respect to the McDade and Church Lane...
Yes.
Intersection.
Yes.
It's my understanding there is a date currently scheduled for...
March 20th, next Thursday.
Okay.
And it's a teams call first with PennDOT. So we got them to agree to have a teams call first with members of the borough. And then, once we have that call, then that will determine for them when we can come up with a date to meet at the intersection, and who would be the appropriate folks from PennDOT to be there.
Wonderful, wonderful. I would like to ask, I did receive the email for that invite. I would like to ask that the rest of council receive the invite as well.
I can forward that to folks.
Okay.
Or Mr. Cave can forward it on whatever we want to do, so yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. All right, moving right along, finance report.
Madam Vice Chair, consideration for the AP list for March 2025.
I would like to entertain a motion for the accounts payable list for March 2025.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Counselor Trent.
Yeah, I was looking at... Do we have a dump truck that need any repairs? Yes. I mean, I don't see a dump truck around that much. That's why I was wondering. I know I haven't seen the street sweeper. Is that being repaired right now? That's on... That's... But the sweeper, I don't know, was in for... I missed the whole street sweeper. Wasn't in for repair. Yes, but what was... What was the question? Is it in for repairs? It's not in for repair. It's actually at the shop. It's in our facility in for repair, not away for repair. Okay, I noticed it wasn't being used the last couple of days thus far. It was out today. Was it? Yeah, I see it was not out. I didn't notice any. Okay, and we have a backhoe. We have an entire fleet in the public works department. You have a backhoe, we have dump trucks, we have the street sweeper, you have... What's that being... Is it AP question or public works question? It's... There's... What are the questions? What's these backhoes used for?
So I'm calling a point of order. Counselor Trent, can we have that discussion? Right. At a later time, please. Right, and we'll... When he comes up, okay, and we'll go through the accounts payable motions right there.
Yeah, I didn't know the question.
Okay, relating to the accounts payable.
Yes.
That's... Okay.
Do we pay quarterly to that... Darby Creek Joint Authority? Yes, that's quarterly. And that's... We're paying like $2 million a year for it? Yes, so that's the store bills. The residents actually, when they pay their store bills, that goes into the store on... Every year, the Darby Creek Joint Authority sends us, you know, the estimate... Not sorry, not the estimate, the actuals that they get from our... To cover the bills that our residents will have to pay. Authority directly, they pay the borough directly, we pay on their behalf.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
Madam Vice Chair, asking for a consideration of the AP additions list for March 2025.
I would like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
And lastly, Madam Vice Chair, consideration for the February 2025 cash balance report.
I would like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Vice President Roaklout.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Moving right along to ordinances and zoning.
Madam Vice President, my report stands as submitted at caucus. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My report is as stands. I just have one update for the gas company restoration and renewal on Wycombe Avenue. They will be moving into our borough most likely Monday. They're finishing up in Darby, so they were starting at Gulf Avenue, Gulf Road, and moving into Darby. We'll have some restrictions and some detours that will be notified on Nextdoor in our website and Facebook and any other entities we have. So, sorry for giving you this, but they're moving forward in our town.
When will they start?
Most likely Monday, they're going to be moving in Austin. They've been in Darby I think in the last two weeks. Yeah, in the last two weeks, so now they're off to Gulf Road, so now they're into our town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
What streets have been being affected by it?
Wycombe Avenue to Bailey Road, Bailey Road to Union, then Union to Fairview.[1769.58]
Great.
So some of the avenues will be?
There's detour signs out there already. There'll be police officers set in place to detour flaggers. It's very noticeable.
Council Beating?
About what times will they be out there during rush hour?
Oh, absolutely. Probably between 8:00 and 4:00 every day, yes.
My other question is, please put that on Nextdoor.
Oh, absolutely. You're welcome.
How soon will we have that information posted on the borough website and Nextdoor and any other?
Tomorrow morning.
I'm sorry?
I think tomorrow morning.
Okay, wonderful.
Tomorrow morning, yes.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Perfect, thank you.
I think you have a motion.
You're asking for consideration of something?
Wake up.
You're asking -- you're asking consideration to authorize the sale of two retired police?
Yes, yes, that's right. Asking for consideration for reselling on Manisabid retired police vehicles, parking enforcement vehicles, and parking meters. And all this will go on Manisabid within the next month or so.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to authorize the sale of two retired police vehicles, one retired parking enforcement vehicle, one emergency management unit, and all retired parking meters on Manisabid.
So moved?
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? I actually have one question. One emergency management unit, is that the same as a vehicle?
It's a vehicle. It's actually a retired ambulance that has been turned into an emergency management unit is what we called it, which is filled with emergency equipment, which is not feasible anymore. It's not up to date anymore. If we have a situation to call in emergency management for a unit, we call Delaware County 911 Center. They have more than enough adequate equipment to send us immediately.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Here or none. I would like to have a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roclout?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Trueheart?
Yes.
Council Beating?
Yes.
Council Trent?
Yes.
Council Pete's?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you explain to me what the backhoe does? I mean, they said we can.
The backhoe does. Which?
I mean, it's on here. It says there's parts needed for the backhoe. So I'm just asking.
What's the backhoe? We use that backhoe every day for lifting, for loading salt in the wintertime, for loading street dirt that we pick up off the street every day. It's a vital piece of equipment. We use that constantly. It helps us not pick up even large items of trash that we pick up, water heaters and refrigerators and stuff that the bed don't have to physically lift. It's a daily-use vehicle. Every day, that piece of equipment is used.
One other question. Sure. When are they going to clear out that debris from the old Yaden Swimming Club?
Actually, it's been started today. Moving equipment out of there. We're moving debris out of there. We're cleaning up absolutely today.
I didn't get a chance to go by that way today.
That's okay. Take a look. It started today. It'll be tomorrow. It'll be next week. It'll be the week after that. We're all to move on that. All right. You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, public safety.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My report stands as read last week, but I'd just like to add a couple things. First, I'm going to respectfully ask for a resolution for the DCED Local Share Account Gaming Fund statewide grant for $250,000 pending the resolution by council and also the annual audit by the Finance Department.
I would like to entertain a motion, please.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions?
Were those two separate extensions?
No, it's just a resolution for the grant for the $250,000. The consideration, just my resolution is for the, just for the resolution, for council to pass a resolution that we can send to Harrisburg.
Question.
Mayor?
Yeah, just a clarification. Is this a grant we're requesting? Is it a grant we have been granted to be approved? What is the resolution?
So your resolution is required because we're submitting an application for $250,000 to come from the Local Share Game -- it should say Local Share Gaming Account Grant Application through the state of Pennsylvania's Department of Community and Economic Development.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would like a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roclout?
Yes.
Council Trueheart?
Yes.
Council Beating?
Yes.
Council Trent?
Yes.
Council Pete's?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank council for the vote of confidence in me. It's definitely my privilege to work for you all, and it's a privilege to work in this department, and it's truly been a privilege working with the community. And I'd just like to echo some stuff, too, that, as you saw last couple weeks, we had some unfortunate incidents, and we have a joking award called the Magnet Award. So the Magnet Award is someone that attracts certain stuff, and I'm not going to tell you what the magnet attracts, but Billy McCullum got it, because unfortunately, he had to handle the accident on Longacre, which I was there at night just to distill any rumors that I don't come in when I'm called. And on Sunday or Saturday, when we had the shooting, I was there, too, and Billy handled that. So I'll be working tonight, overnight, if anyone's looking for me. I'll be working night work tonight with Billy to make sure there's no magnet coming, but I have to echo that department downstairs is amazing. We have Leah who's running around trying to solve this shooting, working with CID. We are truly, I'm truly blessed to have a team besides me working with me. It's definitely been my privilege, and I'm looking forward to another three years with you all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
My privilege to have you.
I'm sorry. I thought I would get away. At least I didn't forget my motion like some people. Thanks to the fire department, seriously. I rag on the fire department, but watching them extract one of those guys, the guy, one of the victims out of a car for over an hour and a half, they did a hell of a job. They really, they did a hell, the fire department did a hell of a job. So you can, hopefully, that's on camera. I'm giving the fire department kudos.
Well, chief, we all witness what you do and your department. We bear witness. So it is what it is.
At least you have me for another three years.
We're blessed to have you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
And, Madam Vice President, I also would like to say to you, chief, I really appreciate that you go above and beyond, and you even always have your eye out on ways that you can bring funds into the community to continue to do the programming, and also your ability to work with others and work collaboratively with others and ask for the support. So I truly appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Emergency management.
It's my privilege to do that, too. Thank you. My report stands as read, Madam President, Vice President, sorry.
Thank you so much. No worries. Fire departments report, please.
I'm on the presidential side, not the fire side.
Just say hi.
I ain't no report. Okay. All right, planning commission, please.
My report stands as reported. It's last week's meeting. The only thing I can add to that is that we had started the meetings where we're coming together to review the comprehensive plans that were previously done, and so we're on a good roll moving forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Recreation, please.
Good evening. Our report stands as submitted. Roy, if you have anything to add?
Part two of the report stands as submitted last week. The only thing I need to add is that trees are coming, so keep looking out for that. We'll, I want to work with the planning commission on that.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Hunter. You indicated trees were coming.
Yes.
Mike, if I'm not mistaken, we also had some trees that?
I have 20, 21 trees.
Left?
Not left. We still have 21 trees. I'm having to distribute here. I have a few residents have requested trees, yes. So I've got 20. How about 18 trees left?
You have about 18 left, and, Mr. Hunter, you indicated more are coming.
Yeah, we'll have more. There's a tree program that, it involves removing certain types of trees and getting others to replace them, so I'll have more information on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you working collaboratively with Mr. Hunter with those trees? And, okay.
We have a list of the residents that are asking for trees, and we're sending out letters to residents who had trees removed, asking if they'd like to have a tree placed back at their property. So, yeah, the trees that were removed the last two years have received a letter that they'd like to have.
So those letters went out a while ago, months ago, correct?
Yes.
So you did not receive?
No, I received at least three requests for those trees.
Well, would it be beneficial at this point in time to just solicit other people who are interested, other residents who are interested, that they would just send an email requesting?
It's actually going to replace the newsletter, and we'll place that on the website.
Okay. Okay, and it'll be first come, first served? Okay, wonderful. Council Beating?
What kind of tree, please? Do you know? There's only one tree, but I don't want huge.
I will send you the list. I have a full list of trees, and there's spreadsheets of what they are. I can't, I don't have every name of these trees.
They're smaller to me.
What I have now is saplings or about this tall.
Do you have any fruit trees?
I don't. Yes, 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 yes.
You said free or fruit? Fruit.
Free. Oh, fruit.
Shoot me the email. I'll send you the list.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All minds clear? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and properly seconded. We adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out. Have a good evening.